Welcome, everybody, to the board meeting for September. We made it. We got our school open. And I think that is totally a reason to celebrate. I had spent many times walking down the sidewalks and watching the kids play in the playgrounds. And they were all socially distanced, wearing their mask, and it was just wonderful to see, to walk through our village again and hear kids talking about their days in school and what they were learning. And just the excitement was just, it was, it was really a good week for everybody. I don't know if you guys ever saw Come From Away, but there's a line in there about planes are meant to fly. And I think it's true that schools are meant to have kids in them and meant to learn. And it was a credit to everybody from the administration, the teachers, the teachers of social union, the clerical staff, parents, everybody deserves a big thanks for helping us get to where we are. So tonight's meeting is going to be relatively short because we want to honor the fact that a lot of people want to get to the high school back to school night. And so without further ado, I'll turn it over to Dr. Montesano.
Do you want to do the approval of the minutes first, Arlene?
Oh, sure. Sorry, in my excitement to get through. We have two sets of minutes to be approved. Do I have a motion?
So move it.
Second. Second.
It was second?
Mr. Kern? All in favor? Hi. Great. Thank you. Right now to you.
Great. Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. It's certainly terrific to be here. Brian, if you're still on, if you can give me screen sharing rights, please, I'd appreciate that. I'd like to share my screen. But I want to let you know that our first four days of in-person school is official. And I think I can do this now. Here we go. Okay, hold on one sec. There you go. So, in our opinion, things have gone really, really well, better than perhaps we could have, could have expected, given everything we've gone through with the pandemic and our construction. Big shout out and appreciation to Mike Lee and the maintenance and custodial crew for preparing our buildings, keeping things clean. Amazing how much work has been completed over the past couple of weeks to really get us to a point where, where we could officially reopen. We know it was touch and go for a while. And it's just the transformation of our building has been just absolutely nothing short of a miracle. Some of our guys have really been working literally two to three weeks straight without a break because they care so much about our school and our community and getting our kids back into the classroom. I also want to take just a quick moment to acknowledge the work of our administrative team and our staff, the amount of prep work and getting organized from new arrival dismissal procedures, temperature checks each morning, health screening follow-ups has made such a difference for us. And it's really able to, you know, the ease in which kids are coming into the building right now is just attributed to all the planning and efforts that have gone from administrative group. So far, things seem to be working. We hope that continues. And the parents have been very cooperative with us so far, and the teachers have just been absolutely amazing. Many are feeling frustrated a little bit because they can't be the best teaching, best teacher that they know they can be due to limitations of space and kids behind shields and teachers needing, needing to be on the screen for those at home as well as those in the classroom. But they're adjusting, and I know it's going to get better each and every day. And finally, I want to thank the students because they've been terrific this first week, I have to tell you, and really following the guidelines, wearing their masks, adjusting to this kind of new normal thing that we call school. But they've been absolutely terrific, and we couldn't do without their, without their cooperation. So that first thing that you see on the screen there is kind of pictures from our opening day. So you'll see the elementary school was, were all out on the, on the field for lineup so we can get the kids in safely on that first day. They start to understand the protocols. You'll see the, that classroom on the right is the, one of the playrooms actually in the elementary school that's been transformed into a classroom. And you can see the desk shields and spacing of the desks as well, and the teacher walking around. And the last picture on the bottom is from our lunchtime. Elementary school students are having lunch outside in the front lawn. It's been great that we've had such nice weather for this first week of school. And they're taking advantage, taking advantage of that, the lawn and the spacing, which has been terrific. So I'm very confident that barring some kind of outbreak where we'd have to shut the school down, we're going to get better, and the teachers will get better and the kids will get better. And I just want to take the opportunity to remind everyone of our protocols in place and ask for your continued cooperation and patience as we get through this together. And if there are any questions, please reach out. The feedback has been terrific for us. And, you know, it's important for us to know the parental perspective so we can adjust accordingly. So thank you to everybody for making this possible.
Thank you, Roy, for your leadership. And it's not just this past week. It's been going on for months, you and Rachel and Dan and everybody. But the leadership from the top really tells here. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Tom. I appreciate the comments. Some, some other good news, we're notified by the New York State Department that the Bronxville Elementary School and Bronxville High School have been designated as recognition schools, which is based on their high achievement, the growth and graduation rate. So I'll be passing these certificates on to the principals for display. So congratulations to the elementary staff, high school staff, and to Anne and to Tricia for their leadership.
Congratulations.
Yeah, very nice, very nice. I'm going to move now on to our enrollment and class size report, which is something we do every year. So you can see on there our current enrollment as of this Monday and where we were projected based on the demographic report from, from last year. And, you know, we're running pretty close to what the demographic report said. You notice in kindergarten, it's up to 92 students.
Not seeing it, Roy.
You're not seeing that?
Oh. Yes, I am.
I have it.
Yeah, I can see it.
I got it.
All right. Anyway. Okay, I'll go on. Sorry, Jack, you're not seeing it. I don't know why.
Okay, no problem. Keep on going.
Okay, fair enough. So it was like three weeks ago, I think, I reported to the board. We're running about 80 students in the kindergarten. Now we're up to 92. We had a late run on registration. I think there was some housing turnover that happened as well that brought some, some additional students in. So we're at 92 currently. You can see that our enrollment is slightly higher than what was projected. And I think that had to do more with some housing turnover than anything else at the middle school. You know, that one bubble we have is just kind of still going through a little bit, but their enrollment's down from last year, from what was projected. And, and the high school is up from what was projected overall. So we're just slightly up, but pretty close to what the, what the projection was going to be. So overall, elementary school enrollment was down by 20 students compared to last year. Middle school's up by nine students compared to last year, and the high school is down by four students. But again, some of this is, is based on housing turnover that I'm not sure how we control for. In terms of class sizes, it's pretty similar to what we've had in the past. The overall average at the elementary school is running about 21 and a half students. You can see the numbers there. We have a remote section, grade three, and a remote section, grade five. Other than that, we are, we're pretty good on our class sizes at the middle school.
Hey, Roy, right, just, John, just before you move on from that.
Yep.
Seeing seven sections in fifth grade seems like a lot. Is that, is that because of the remote?
That's because of the remote, John, yeah. You know, we were trying to adjust it based on the feedback we got in terms of how many kids will be running, coming from remote. So originally, we had five section kindergarten, and we thought we could manage that better because we, we, you know, enrollment was looking, at the time, was about 80 students or so. So we moved that section to fifth grade where we thought we needed it because of the number of people who said they were going to be learning remotely.
Thank you.
Yeah. The middle school, again, similar class sizes to the previous year. Overall average in the core areas running about 21.4 compared to last year was 20.5. So similar to what, what you'd mind expect. And there's not too many classes that really are above, you know, that 25 number for us, which is, which is really a good thing. And finally, in the high school, again, very similar to the previous year. This year averaging about 19.7 compared to 19.1 the, the previous year. We try to keep those sections as under 30 as best we can. You can see there are some that, that run above that based on some singleton classes, some AP classes and things like that that are really hard to control for. But I know Anne's done a great job, and I, God, his department's done a great job in trying to balancing, balance all that out. Just a couple of things, I'm going to stop sharing for a moment. Just a couple of other things to let the board know. We have a new requirement in the state this year that we have now to report the daily, and report daily on the number of students and staff who have been tested for COVID. How many of those tests were positive, based on information that we gather or that people tell us? I think the state is just trying to gather as much information as they possibly can. They've set up a dashboard for, for parents to go to if they want that information, trying to keep people as informed as it can to see, track infection rates and, and the like. We're aware of a few students who have been tested, who are symptomatic. And fortunately, based on what we know, they've all come back negative. So that's been great for, for us. As we enter the, this normal cold and flu season that we're going to be entering very soon, it's going to be a bit trickier for everyone. Because as you know, the daily questionnaire has symptoms on it, that mirror symptoms of the regular flu. But we're going to, you know, err on the side of caution and conservative, being conservative in having kids in school. The other thing I want to let everyone know is we learned recently that the state is commandeering our school to be used as a polling place on November 3rd. We don't have a choice, from my understanding, in allowing this to happen or not happen. So I, I'm going to recommend to the board that we take November 3rd as a fully remote learning day for everybody. So we can still count it as a day of school. But with people coming in and out of the building, I'm very concerned. And we want to have enough time to clean in between. So I don't want, I'd rather not have any, any students in for that day. So I will be announcing and letting everybody know that November 3rd with the board approval will be a remote learning day, since we're set up to do that anyway.
What about the next day, given the time, given how late the polls close?
Yeah, I think we can do it, Jack, but it's, it's not the entire building they're using. You know, it's really, it's really limited to the, to the gym. So we can get them in the one door, pretty out pretty quickly. So it's really contained. So I think we'll be fine.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. At this time, I'm going to ask Joe Haven, our new athletic director, to provide an update on athletics as he's received it from the state. I'm going to just share my screen so you can see Joe's report up there as well. I hope I'm going to anyway. Here we go. This, this, I'll be with you in one second, if you don't mind. No, that's not it. Hold on. Can you see that or no? No. Hold on. Okay, little technical glitch. I'll get through. I don't know why I can't hear. Here we go. Okay. Okay, Joe, you're on.
Me and everyone. So as you know, the state finally allowed athletics to begin, low and moderate risk sports. State Association set the date of November 21st for all low to moderate sports to begin. When the fall for that, for us, that's cross-country, tennis, field hockey, and both soccers, boys and girls. Section 1 decided that we're not going to start until the 29th. Section 1 leadership just decided that having an extra week off just to make sure there's no infection rate in school, where, you know, obviously, we're here for academics first. School is flowing smoothly. They decide to start the 29th. So on, on the 29th, we will start those programs, and those are high school programs only. So far, we've given no guidance from middle school athletes, which is something that's graders. So at this time, we've, there's no modified sports included in this. So just starting will be those five high school sports. As you can see, football and field hockey, and for us, a couple volleyball players, they have deemed those high-risk sports. So they're moving those back to what they're calling Fall Session 2. And Fall Session 2 will start March 1st. And just so everybody is aware, the governor will determine if those sports are no longer high-risk. At this point, those sports are considered high-risk along with, for us, basketball, hockey, so, and lacrosse. So at this point, as, up until, currently up until December 30th, we cannot have those sports participate. He said he will make a decision before the 30th whether we're going to change that or not. So with the later start date for the 29th, what, what, what the state has done is they have moved the end date of fall sports to November 30th. Well, I say November 29th because the winter sports are going to start November 30th. Now, sections have the right to end a week earlier if they'd like. Each section will have their own choice of when they want to end the fall season, but it must be completed by the 29th of November so that the indoor sports can start on November 30th. And like I said, very important to us because, because of hockey and basketball, those sports haven't been approved yet. The main reason is they're indoor sports. So then our, our winter season is going to go from November 30th until the last day of February. It's a very long season. And then we'll start a fall sports 2 season, which is the football and field hockey. But you'll also notice that we are not doing swim in the fall. And that was not because it's a high-risk sport. It was done because section 1, like many other sections, rent high school facilities for swim, and there's no availability for us to have swim go on during that time. So swim, we also moved to the February, or excuse me, to the March 1st date. And it, swim may start a little bit earlier depending on the boy's season in the winter. And then what that does is that pushes back the start of our spring sports to April 19th. I did listen to the, to the director of our state association speak yesterday. And one thing he said that was very interesting, if, if the state decides there are no regions this year, they're going to try to continue the, the spring season to the end of June. Obviously, there are regions still going on. They will end it before the regions begin. They said they may take it up afterwards, but that'll be a discussion I'm sure he has with superintendents. But as of right now, if there are no regions, he's going to continue the spring season right until the end of, you know, until graduation. I would let you know that there are four sections in the, in the state of the 11 sections. Four of them have completely shut down for the fall season. And those are section 4, which is the southern tier, section 8, which is Nantucket County, section 9, which is Orange County, Ulster County, Duchess County, and then section 11, which is Suffolk County. Section 3 in the last few days, which is the Syracuse area, has seen a quarter of their schools independently shut down. But we do have five sections that are full go, and that includes us. And that is basically where we are at, at this moment. We've had some discussion already previously during the summer about making some opportunities for our modified athletes if there is no season. And that's something we will work with, with the coaches, about doing some clinics for the kids, just to make sure, it's an intermio program, just to make sure they do get the opportunity to get out and compete, be with their coaches. They don't compete with themselves in, in school type, our own school setting. But they'll have the opportunity to get out and be with their friends, their, their friends, their athletes, do some competitive things. And our football program is planning on doing the same thing, where they're going to go out and they're, I was working with Patsy. He's a group kids together. We're going to do some small-sided stuff for the football program, obviously. But we're going to ensure social distancing the whole time, and that's the plan for the fall season as we, as it stands.
Great. Thank you, Joe. Any questions from the board on that?
Yeah, it's John. Hi, Joe. Thank you for that. Welcome again. I'm sure this is what you were hoping to do on your starting, starting plan. Will, will the sports, I have two questions. One, will the sports that are, that are kind of going to be going up and running, will they be interscholastic or will they be sort of intramural in nature? In other words, will cross-country have meets against other schools? The second part of my question is, given the limited number of sports, are we planning on having larger teams? I mean, we're going to try and make accommodations for having a lot more people who would otherwise maybe be doing something else, be doing the sports that are allowed. Thank you.
Right. So for part one of that, yes, we will be competing against other schools up until the 19th of October. We have to stay within our region, within our section. After the 19th, if we have games outside the region, we can do that. We will be competing against our league opponents. Section 1 is currently developing the schedules. Well, we would play each league opponent twice. Then after that's completed, we can go out and find additional games if we'd like. So that is the first question. Social distancing is huge. The state does mandate that athletes participate with face masks on. Their faces must be covered unless the athletes can't tolerate it. So I don't know how that's going to work out, but the guidance that is coming from the state is saying that athletes during practices, if they're not social distance, must wear a mask over their face. And then obviously during games, the same thing, unless they can't tolerate it. Cross-country is interesting because that's one of the few sports they put a stipulation on. Teams can only have 12 athletes at an event and only four, four schools per event. So you're not going to see any big invitationals for this fall. And when we have a bigger team, there will be some JV meets that'll be individual without the, without the varsity athletes at them. But that is very important for us to make sure athletes keep running. And what was your second question again? The second part?
Accommodating more demand, basically, like if you go, you know.
Right. So we've been, we've been watching the numbers through Family ID. And currently, we are probably about 120 people under last year. And I'm assuming that's the, the athletes, for instance, football athletes, who currently cannot participate right now, some of them have not registered for Family ID yet. And then some of our modified athletes. When I did the parent Zoom last week, I informed them that modified has not been approved yet. I did encourage them still to sign up. Because the worst thing that'll happen is that we have their information. So when the winter season starts, we have their information already started. The coaches do understand that rosters may be getting a little bit bigger. The only problem with that is we still need to transport our athletes. And also, too, during games and things, we still need to practice social distance on the bench. And so I don't see our teams automatically getting larger. I, I'm assuming we'll have a few more student athletes try to APP, come up from seventh grade up to the JV or varsity team. But as the numbers are showing right now, we're not in a situation where our teams are growing that huge yet. Now, obviously, we do have two weeks till the season starts. So it'll be interesting to see how we get to that point. But I do think what might help us keep that down a little bit is by offering intramural things for the kids who are not having the opportunity to participate on a school-based setting against other schools. So we're going to have that opportunity for our student athletes and for some of our modified athletes. That might be a great opportunity for a nice introduction into athletics, stay at the school a couple of days a week, figure out what's going on. So that way, when the fall comes, they're sort of used to, or excuse me, when winter comes, they're used to the process, and it makes traveling to games, you come almost every day, a bit smoother transition for them.
So for intramural options, are you just thinking the intramural version of what we already offer? Or are you thinking about adding other sports, you know, as an example, like an ultimate frisbee, something that would be allowed with social distancing, but is not really a varsity sport type offering?
I have not discussed that part of it yet, to be honest with you. I've had discussions with, with the head varsity coaches, many of them, about what will we do with your modified athletes? Obviously, modify is what build your program. We don't, we do not want to lose the modified student athlete because obviously, that's our future. So currently, we're speaking about that. Like, like I said, section 1 is not giving us any guidance yet on what's happening for modified. So I don't want to fully get involved with it yet, just in case they decide, you know what, go ahead with modified sports. I do think it's a long shot to have modified sports this year. But the additional sports, I have not looked into yet, to be honest with you. But that would be something that if we're not having a large sign up with the traditional sports, I wanted mine to talk to Jillian in the phys ed department and see if they have some ideas of other things we can do to encourage even more student athletes to come out.
Yeah, I mean, I, just for what it's, I would encourage that because we have, you know, in any given year, we have a lot of kids who don't participate in what I would call the main, the main sports programs. We do have a lot of people who participate in the main ones. But right now, I just think it's, it's more important than ever to get kids moving around, participating, doing something physical, getting back to like some level of normalcy.
Okay. I couldn't agree, I couldn't agree, I could not agree more if the state authorities, the Athletic Association, much less section 1, and I'm unaware of the law that provides them with any authority over our extracurricular programs. And there is no marginal increased risk of spread when we're talking about our kids playing with our kids, assuming we observe social guidance, social guidelines as distancing as, as best we're able. For instance, it was my understanding that Patsy, the football coach, and by the way, in Lohud, our football team is featured today as the state of the program. But it was my understanding that once they have out, once they've ruled against or postponed interscholastic competition, then their authority over our intrasholastic program ends. And our students, Patsy should be able to have football practice come October 20, on September 29th.
Absolutely. It's staying in-house. I've had discussions with Patsy. We're actually going to meet about it next week. And we're determined, we're, we're going to plan out his season for him. I just saw some schools are going to 7-on-7 opportunities. And if that's an opportunity that Patsy will look into, we definitely look into that. But that'd be more of a type-based type opportunity for athletes. But he does, he is fully where to go. His staff is fully involved and interested in working with our student athletes. And that is, it's commendable for him. Because some, you know, some people have sort of, you know, put their tail on the ground and went away saying, well, they're not letting us play. But Patsy and his staff is like, no, what can we do to get these kids on the field? So that's, that's outstanding for him to do that, and we're pretty excited about that happening.
And it might be an opportunity to expand the appeal of football if everybody knows that it's just an intra Bronxville experience. And that's, you know, while not optimal, that's the reality of the best we can offer right now. And maybe March 1st happens, a magical thing happens between now and March. But frankly, I think we look at March the same way we looked at September back in April.
Absolutely. And as I said, our programs will be advertised open. So it's going to be an open practice football. Open means anybody can come.
And modified, frankly, if the people who are somehow amorphously provided with the authority to provide guidance have not provided that guidance, then they've punted, for want of a better way of putting it, on their right to provide that guidance. And we need to do the best we can for our kids, and I want these kids off Xbox and out and running around.
Absolutely. I agree 100%.
Thanks.
Great. Thanks, Joe. The only thing I would add to what Joe mentioned, and this is really a shout out to the Ed Foundation as well, the Bronxville School Foundation as well, is, you know, because we're limited with spectators or potentially limited spectators when we were able to do interscholastic competition, the foundation last year approved a grant to purchase cameras for Chambers Field, Hayes Field, and our main gym. And we're going to be working with Local Live to broadcast those games live so people can see them, you know, if they're at work or from the desk or things like that as well. So hopefully, that'll come to be in time for us to be able to do that. So.
Yes, Roy, we, Roy, we do have two folks from Local Live coming tomorrow to check out the, they're ready to go. And they're going to start installing next week. I work with Mike Lee and Dan on that. And they're getting ready to call the cameras next week.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, I do want to go into my next part, if that's okay. And that is, again, as soon as I find it. Here it is. So here we go. Okay, great. So the next part of my report is really something that we're required to do annually, and that is discuss our district emergency plans. So we have a district plan, and we have building plans. And just very quickly, we work with our security consultant, Al Terrace, to prepare our plans. That's who we contract our security director, Rob Lancia, through as well. And they've been a great partner for us in developing our emergency management plans. The district safety plan provides a general guidance on prevention and emergency management. It's posted on our website for people to see. We do develop it along with our Bronxville Safety Team. It was finalized by the team back in June. And then we posted it because you need to post it for 30 days for a public comment. And we'll be presenting that today, is presented today for, for board approval, which is something we're required to do. Whoops, sorry. The building level plan is more specific in nature, providing course of action take during an emergency. They are considered to be confidential, which is why they're not posted for anyone to see by the New York State Department and Ed Law mandates. We also did that in conjunction with Al Terrace and in our internal Bronxville Emergency Response Team. They were done on June 10th as well. And once the board approves them, hopefully tonight. And once the board approves them, hopefully tonight, we, we need to submit them up to the state by the 15th of October. So what changes have been made? This year, a little bit more comprehensive nature detailing, more specific actions and suggestions to be taken in the event of emergency. We had a number of staff members contribute to these changes for our school. And the pandemic had something to do with these changes. For example, we have a continuity of instruction plan to make sure we have a plan in place in the event the school shut down either for power flooding, not that we've ever do that in Bronxville. Terror related event, pandemic, something like that. So we have our continuity of instruction plan. We have a continuity of operations and business plan that Rachel, Dan, and Mike Lee worked on along with Al Terrace to cover our business facilities, HR and security, to keep everything running there. And we also have an infectious disease annex, which was amended by our health staff that addresses not only COVID, but other medical concerns as well, and talks about the course of action needed to address any kind of infectious diseases that might appear in school during, before, and after an outbreak. So that's one of the things you'll need, you're being asked to approve tonight. The other one is a door hardening resolution. So reason you're being asked to approve a resolution for this is right now, the state is allowing us to have door vision panels to be covered during an emergency, for example, than lockdown. But the only way we can do it legally is to have the board pass a resolution allowing us to do so. So that's why you'll see that on existing language in our plans. It just says turn off the lights and leave the blinds as they are, and specifically says do not cover the door window, because that's what the state requires or mandates. Now, we're going to delete that because if you approve this resolution, we will have our staff authorized to temporarily cover the class door panels to protect students. So if there's an intruder, we don't want them seeing in our buildings. But it does, again, require a board resolution to do that. So that's pretty much the emergency plan. And because it's a public hearing, I would have to entertain any questions by the board members currently or people are in public. If there isn't anyone in the public who want to have a question or a comment, please put it in the chat on the YouTube channel so we can respond. So first with the board members. Okay. Good, any, any comments in the chat room, Connie, that you can see or?
There's nothing in the chat, nothing in the chat.
Great, in that case, the board is being asked to soon pass the resolution at this point.
Well, I think first we, Dan, you can guide me. First, we need to approve the contract with Al Terrace that was attached to the board materials. One thing to note is it was for the wrong years. But Dan mentioned to me that they would supply us with one for this current year, but the pricing, everything else is the same.
Yeah, it's basically the same level of service we had last year, except this year it's for a full year. Last year was only 10 months because we started later. You know, I think Roy would back me up in saying Al Terrace has kind of been a godsend to us, especially during this, this period of time. First with getting, getting our, our safety and management of security guards together. And then, you know, even in pandemic response planning, they've been, they've been with us every step of the way. And we finally have safety professional in the building, which, you know, we, we wanted for years.
Another benefit is that by having Rob Lancia here supervising the guards, it took it away from Mike Lee, who was in charge of the guards, allowing him to focus more on the building, which was desperately needed during this, during this entire time. So there were some added benefits to that. And I would just echo what Dan said, that Al Terrace has been a great partner with us. And when we had to submit our pandemic plans to the state, they helped out quite a bit with us. So I would fully support this.
Wonderful, may I have a motion?
Move.
Second?
Second.
Is there any, any discussion amongst the board on the approval of the contract? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Connie, we passed. So then I think we now move to the adoption of the 202021 district safety plan and building level emergency response plan. May I have a motion?
Remove. Second.
Yeah, Tom Curran and Jack Bearworth, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed? Okay, and then the last motion is the one about the visual panel covering during the emergencies. That was included, and the wording was included in our materials. May I have a motion?
I'll second whatever you want.
Was that Jack and Jen?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Dr. Kelly? Laura's yours.
Thanks, everybody. Good evening. I have a number of resolutions for you guys to consider this evening. This is typically the agenda where I ask you to consider leaves as well as overages, which are classes that are covered by our faculty internally. We have some substitute appointments as well as a few more teacher residents, substitute teacher, substitute teacher aide. And you also have before you two side letters as it relates to both the BTA and the BAA concerning enrollment of children of non-resident unit members. And then we have the special other stipend list and a minor revision to the fall coaches roster. So I'd like you to consider the resolutions in their entirety, A through double I.
I was so glad to hear you want to do them all together. May I have a motion?
Removed.
Tom Evans, and I saw Jack with a second. Any discussion by the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Carlin?
The board has a copy of the July 31st preliminary budget summary. It's way too early for expenditures, but we are anticipating COVID related costs for cleaning to put pressure on the expenditure budget. However, revenues is where the bulk of the current year problem lies. We all know about the 20% reduction as the state is kind of playing chicken with the federal government in state aid. That amounts to about a $500,000 hole for us in our revenue budget. And this is further compounded by anticipated shortfalls in interest income as rates have kind of plummeted along with the pandemic. And we're also looking closely at special ed tuition revenue. The lone good news is that we have significant non-resident tuition revenue surplus of about $150,000, which should help in some of these other area shortfalls, aside from the state aid. Aside from cleaning, other anticipated shortfalls not yet quantifiable. On the expenditure side, I'm looking at private school transportation as we are forced to move to larger buses to maintain physical distance requirements. And, and I'm really, you know, worried about cleaning and security. I'll have a better handle on those as we get through September. But, you know, this is not going to be a typical year. This is, this is going to be a belt tightening year. I, I think it's, it's highly likely that I recommend Roy that we freeze all non-essential spending, maybe at the end of October, once we get our, our feet underneath us for the current year and try and deal with this as best we can. You know, luckily, we're in decent shape with our fund balance. And, but it's going to, it's going to be a tough year. And that'll move straightforward, straight into the budget for next year as well. You know, when we get to creating that. Happy to answer any questions?
And I know Michael Finley is not with us tonight. And but this is such an important issue for the finance committee, who will be part, who partner with you and walk hand in hand. This is a critical issue for the board. We are blessed that we've been able to get to this point today. But in a lot of ways, it was because we had the resources and we were able to, to do the changes to the building, the PP and E, et cetera, et cetera. But we're going to have to be really diligent as we go through the year.
And the foundation has been
Foundation.
Extremely helpful.
Exactly, exactly. And just exactly your words, you know, the fund balances are steady and sturdy, which is really good. But it's still incumbent upon us to make sure that we are very responsible in how we spend our money.
Absolutely.
And the foundation, the foundation helps those who helps, help themselves, right? Like last spring, leading into this, we saw that we really needed to be careful about any, any expenditures that we may have been tempted to, to entertain at that time.
Sure. I have a few financial action items. The first one is non-resident students. You heard me talk about how we're doing well with tuition. We have 12 full tuition students who are non-residents, 31 faculty students, including seven paying the faculty tuition rate. So the board every year has to approve those non-resident students. So it has the board to approve that.
So Dan, are we, we going to do these all together, the?
A through H, we're going to do all together because they're all special, we can, we can do A through H. We have the tuition resolution, then we have the special education and related services and health related contractors whom we've done business with for years. Rates are either the same or very similar to prior years. I would ask the board to, to approve those contracts for our partners for the current year.
So these are all consistent with prior years. Maybe a quick question for you, Rachel. The homebound, how does that get impacted by the remote learning?
Right, two separate situations. Homebound tutoring is specifically for children who are typically ill and can't come to school. And so we're eligible, we are responsible for continuing to educate them. So that is different from remote learning.
But if I'm homebound and I'm ill, could I do remote learning?
Well, now you can, yes.
That's my question. Now, I would think that, that now maybe we will not use the homebound services much because
They can just join their class conceivably.
Yeah.
That's right, we have an option this year that we have not had in prior years.
Correct, okay. Okay, may I have a motion from the board for A through H?
Remove. Second.
Any discussion or questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Great.
I have a three line facilities update in that we got school open. We're still waiting for the curtain wall, for the windows and the cast, precast molding. That's looking towards end of October. And we'll be focusing more on the Meadow Avenue addition in the coming months. Hopefully, get that done by Christmas. Financially, the project's going fairly well despite the next action item, which is change orders. The largest change order is a net $100,000 change order. It's actually two change orders, a credit and an expenditure for removing the contaminated oil tank. So that would increase the, the net increase to the two Niram contracts of about $100,000. And then a very small electrical change order for fixture color change for a custom color that we requested in the, I believe in the cafeteria and the learning commons.
Okay, Dan, can we take all three together?
Yes.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the three change orders that are listed in your agenda items?
Move.
Second.
Any discussion from the board?
Do we expect many more change orders coming?
There's, there's a few, nothing obviously this significant. We haven't seen the window change order yet, you know, for the curtain wall windows. But, you know, we're going to do what we can to, to see if we can charge that to somebody. But that's, I think about $46,000 or $48,000. You'll see that coming for soon, maybe. And, you know, we're, we still got a ways to go in the I think there's a significant electrical change order coming. I'm not sure if that falls within the allowance or not. But, you know, change order wise, as a percentage of the contract, this is the lowest I've ever seen on a project so far.
And Dan, you touched upon a topic that's important. As part of the, the budget process for the capital projects, we set up allowances for the various trades that are working on the building. These change orders that we're talking about tonight, are they, are they, do they fall within? Are the allowances that were set up sufficient to cover these change orders or not?
The electrical one, yes. The, the oil tank, no. That's, that's going to go straight to the contingency for the project, which is still robust.
Okay.
At this point.
Well, let's keep an eye on that because we may have to make some difficult choices about necessity versus desire. If we're, you know, if there's a prospect of us having to dig into our pockets here.
Absolutely. Do we schedule a discussion in exec session to talk with lawyers about some of the issues that have come up?
Sure. I hate talking to lawyers, Jack.
Will do. And that's it. So hopefully, people can get to the high school.
Great, any other discussion from the board members? All right, having heard none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the three motions carry. All right, I'm watching the hour closely. Any committee reports? I'm not aware of any. Doesn't look like, okay. So our next board meeting, I think, is one of the most really interesting and fulfilling meetings, is the long term, long range planning workshop on October 5th. I really would encourage people to join in on that because we look at trends in education and how we just maintain our high level of education we have in our town. And also look at the important topics around, you know, how the pandemic has impacted social justice and things like such as that. So I think it'll be a, a great meeting. So with that, we have the public's discussion. And Connie, do we have any questions in the queue?
Nothing in the queue.
Okay. Okay, with that, Roy, unless there's something else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Enjoy your back to school night.
Thanks, everybody.
Everyone.